Let's, meeting to order. Mari, roll call.
Aye.
Short one. Let me say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I guess I get to second.
I don't know that that's...
Oh, we defer that?
Yeah, well, let's defer the adoption...
I think, let's defer the adoption of the agenda until we have a quorum. Okay. So we'll move on to the next item, but before that, I just want to announce that there's good news and bad news. The bad news is you have me. The good news is the chair will be here shortly to take over from me. Item 2.01, update on the student exchange trips. And who do I, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Chairman Ankuma.
I love the title.
Appreciate you being here tonight. This evening, we have a couple of things on the agenda, but the first one is the update on the student exchange trips. I know that this is a topic that had been discussed perhaps in the spring as something that we had hoped would come forward. And there are a couple of exchange trips that have happened and have been scheduled, and a lot of the conversation that we're going to talk about is more prospective than it is more immediate. But I've asked Trish Minson and Dr. Kevin Clark to be here tonight to talk about what they've been able to discern and discover about the process, and at the end, we have a recommendation moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Trish.
Sure. So when I was very short in my time here, I think the first week, Tom Horn, my predecessor, said, "One of the things that you really need to run to ground is student trips, both field trips that happen around the community and study abroad trips." It's something that has been an issue in the past that was stopped for a while and then started back again. We wanted to report back to the board what it is that we're doing now mainly out of the high school and what we were planning on doing with a middle school trip upcoming and open it to questions that you all have, talk about what the current policy is and what our proposed actions would be going forward. So Kevin finally made the time to be here to talk about the two exchange programs that they have at the high school, and then I was going to talk about the middle school program.
Hello?
Hello.
Kevin Clark, this is the principal at the high school. Just to give you a brief overview of sort of the path that we've taken over the last couple of years, initiated with Dr. Jones and Tom Horn, previous legal counsel here, in terms of adopting a different framework for any student trips, exchange trips, et cetera. Oh, my microphone...
Sure. I'll start over. So Kevin Clark, from the high school assistant principal. So the world language department at the high school felt that it was certainly a worthwhile experience that they were offering for students over the years. However, the concerns on the board and from Dr. Jones was that this school was basically planning and coordinating the entirety of the trips, taking on risks really from the school level division, and wanting to establish a clear line where trips that were potentially offered for students were not run through the schools, but were going to be offered through the privately sponsored school trips as sort of referenced in policy 6.38 in the regulations. So over the course of the last couple of years, I've helped out in terms of coordinating with Tom Horn. We've had several meetings with world language teachers and Tom Horn, as well as with Dr. Jones, about what it would look like if privately, you know, to offer privately sponsored trips to students at the high school level specifically. And I know Trish is going to speak a little bit about the middle school level. So the way that process went is Tom Horn actually helped identify one of our vendors that we've been working with for the current CHILA trip, a local organization called A-Lac Cart Travel here in McLean, helped us to basically transition from what was previously run strictly throughout the school to an opportunity that was coordinated and organized entirely by the third party, by A-Lac Cart Travel. And in terms of our China trip, the organization is called Alpha Partners Exchange. They run exchange travel trips in Boston. They're actually running one, I think, this year with Marshall High School. And so that organization is coordinating our Chinese trip, which is a two-way homestay exchange as well. The inbound dates, so for CHILA, the inbound date has recently passed, September 9th through 2022. We had 22 Chilean students that came and were hosted by families in Falls Church. And the outbound program dates of both trips, hello? It's okay. Are over spring break, so overlap with spring break. And the, so the Chilean trip, again, A-Lac Cart Travel has provided the planning resources, and everything is run through them. For the China trip, the Alpha Exchange Partners will be coordinating that trip and putting in some of the best practices that we've been able to identify in terms of vetting families, doing home visits and things like that that are, you know, highly recommended and in terms of best practice with regard to exchange travel. You know, we value this opportunity for kids. We believe in the international mindedness that we offer as an IB program and as an IB school, you know, looking forward to a globalized society with kids and people living all across the world and traveling and working with global organizations. So we do find that it's an important opportunity for students, but we have sort of put in place organizations that can help provide these services sort of externally from the organization of Falls Church and taking off a lot of, a lot of the risk and the responsibility that previously teachers were taking on and I think the schools were taking on. So that's sort of the gist of where we are currently. Like I said, we have the two, the two exchange programs going on this year. We have had a couple, last year, we had a group that went to England in the spring, again, externally organized. We've had a couple different groups sort of brainstorming about travel opportunities. One group was thinking about doing a trip to Puerto Rico potentially, but those are not planned or, you know, not fully planned or sort of prepared at this point. So the two that were running this year, like I said, the CHILA and the China trips, inbound and outbound for China coming up in 2018, and then outbound program for CHILA coming up, Santiago de Chile in the Tre Huelo British School in Santiago, which is actually the same school we used to partner with, but now run through A-Lac Cart Travel.
Any questions about the high school program, or would you all like to hear about the middle school proposal and then questions at the end? So the middle school, one of the science teachers came to Valerie Hardy and asked Ms. Hardy whether they would be able, it's my understanding the middle school program had done a trip in the past to the Everglades, and it was something that was offered at the end of school outside the school year, that teachers had been sponsors on the trip, and it was something they had wanted to continue, but wanted to make sure that was clear whether it was a private trip or a trip through the school. I think in the past, maybe it was a trip through the school. So I worked with the organization that they used in the past, World Strides, and there is a document on Board Docs that World Strides had put together, and we spent a fair amount of time negotiating to make sure that there was no reference in their agreement to the schools, the teachers, the programs, because previously, as it had been structured, it was a school program with our teachers, with our staff, with our support and our guidance. And what I told that program in working with Dr. Noonan was, "This is a great activity if it's something that an outside organization wants to make available to our students, but we can't, we're not, we're in the business of educating students, not traveling with students." So if this is an enrichment program that we want to provide an opportunity for, we want to make it clear to the students and to their parents that the board is not discouraging this or encouraging it in any way. So together with World Strides, we put together a notice, and that's another document on Board Docs, making clear that Falls Church City Public Schools doesn't sponsor the travel study program, doesn't take any position approving or disapproving it, certainly recognizes the potential educational values of such experiences, but we don't promote or endorse them. So any work towards these programs would be done after school hours, teachers on their own time, making it clear that the teachers are working as either independent contractors or as third party, as employees of these third parties who are coming in to do these programs, and having all parents sign a waiver noting that this isn't an FCCPS program even though it is available to FCCPS students. So that's what we put together with the middle school. It's not clear, I don't think the MEH has decided if they're going to go forward with this program this year, if they have a, if World Strides has a employee or teacher that they want to use for this program, or if they'll find another third party to come in to lead the program and still have it open for MEH students. But we thought it was very important that in looking at what our current policies were, and it's my understanding and talking to Kevin as well, that the policy 6.38 under student trips and instruction has a final section, Section D, on privately sponsored trips, and that this and the programs at the high school are privately sponsored trips that are not endorsed by the school board, and we need to make clear to students and to their parents that the nature of the trips is private enterprises. So that's what I understand the high school has done. That's what we did in working through this potential program with the middle school. I do think that this is a policy that we'll want to revise, but as far as the practice as it's in place right now, I do feel the policy is being followed, and we are making sure that there's no, no direct connection between the programs and FCCPS. We did run the, both the waiver and the World Strides contract through VML, our liability insurance company, and they said, "This is great. There's no connection between you and this." So this is something that can be run, and just like any other program that wants to come to the school and use our space and talk to our students, they can run a room and talk to our students, and as long as the teachers, if there are teachers who are sponsoring, and make clear that they're not doing it in their capacity as an FCCPS employee, this is fine to have the program run this way and to follow our policy 6.38D for privately sponsored trips. So that was the update that we'd wanted to provide. And Dr. Noonan, was there more on that that I'm leaving off?
No, I just, I think the big, the big idea here that I want to make sure is clear to the board and to the community is that, as Dr. Clark mentioned, you know, we find that being internationally minded in these trips are important, and if there are ways that we can separate out these trips from the actual liability that we hold as a school division, that's the best practice moving forward for us. And so we've been able to identify ways to do that, and at this point, we would just entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I'll throw out a couple. So how, I mean, there's direct and indirect support. Is, do we have a policy as communications take place on non-FCCPS accounts? How much of a line can we draw around private activities to avoid blurring with FCCPS?
I do think it'd be important that we have guidance perhaps in a regulation for school staff if they are going to volunteer in this, this role for a third party to either use a third-party email address or a private email address and not FCCPS email resources, time, even paper as far as printing things up. I do think it is important to keep those distinct.
I do think though, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
Go ahead.
I do think that there are ways that we can post flyers and we can distribute information about it, but perhaps putting up some of those guardrails that Ms. Minson mentioned. In previous districts that I've been a part of, for example, there've been flyers that have been put up in classrooms of world language teachers for these third-party vendors that are putting things on. There have been meetings that have been held in the school following the school use protocols and the like, so we would certainly allow that as well.
And we, just to comment too, the regulation on 6.38 is, school participation is limited to posting bulletins and making brochures available through the library, guidance office, and at locations designated for public announcements. So that's sort of the guideline that we follow. The piece that maybe is missing from the regulation is sort of what are now sort of online bulletin boards, you know, notifications that go out to the community or that kind of piece, which is not necessarily explicitly spelled out in the regs. So that's something that it might be helpful to provide some guidance.
Yeah, and I think explicit statements of what's not permitted as well.
And one of the things that I spoke with the potential middle school sponsor about was making sure that HIPAA and FERPA are complied with. A teacher would have information about students by virtue of being a teacher that they can't share with a third-party trip group about a student's behavior, a student's discipline, how they think the student would act on the trip. That all would be information that couldn't be shared with third parties. So making sure that if a teacher comes to this and wants to be a sponsor through a third party, they know that there's certain information that they can't share, that they would have had access to, just as by virtue of perhaps being a teacher for these students. So I do think it's important that we have expectations for staff if they are going to seek this role externally from their role as an FCCPS staff member.
And it seems there are two issues. There are students going abroad, and then there are other students coming here. For example, with the, with the Chileans who were here a couple of weeks ago, what is the, my understanding is, they didn't spend a lot of time, if any, on campus. Is that...
They were, they were, they were meeting mostly on campus in the morning, going on excursions. They did spend at least one full school day with their, their host. So they, the Chilean group spent one day in the school, and the rest, they were meeting, going on excursions, and then returning at the end of the day.
And do we get indemnifications or anything from the tour groups supporting these, that in the event that there's any claim brought against the schools, that we, that we get some indemnification from them, either with respect to lodging or other assistance?
Not that I know of, and I need to look into that. I think specifically by making sure that it's a private entity doing it, we take some of the liability away, but to the extent they're in our buildings and in our schools, we need to make sure that our insurance would cover activities that are taking place within our buildings. As far as lodging, that would be on the, the third-party travel agency, since it's not a contract with us, since we're not involved, since we don't select the families or do the home screening. So I think we would be protected in that regard.
Okay.
Something that I think the school did very well in terms of our inbound students, students coming from other countries, was the Australian trip last year when they came to our school. I still talk to some of them actually, just from them being there for one day. And then also, at the high school, is it something hard for a group or a class to propose a trip to go somewhere? You know, being an international-minded school, I feel like this process should be maybe a little bit easier than what I've heard it made it out to be. So just how hard is this process?
As far as how hard the process is, I think we need to look at both the regulation 6.38 and the policy. If I were a student who were trying to do this, I would want to reach out to one of these third-party, whether it's A-Lac Cart Travel or someone else, and say, "I'm interested in going to this country or studying this topic, and I have friends who are interested too. What types of programs do you have?" And they would likely point you towards either what programs they already have existing, if they already have tours through other schools, how many students it would take to get a tour up and starting. But I think that would be a great thing to do, and if you have a teacher who'd be interested in getting involved, having that teacher then be working directly with the third-party company and be a contractor for them to help arrange that. But that would be, if I were a student, the first place that I would start.
Thank you.
Neil?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Since the last one standing. Having experienced the most, and my older daughter did both the, I think, at the end of the seventh grader, was a Costa Rican trip, and then she did go, we hosted a Chilean, and then she went to Chile as well. And obviously, we're considering, now that it's available, we're considering it for my, my twelfth grader. But I have a question. So if, but then I believe it was through the school back then. So to the extent where, is the word outsourcing appropriate here? Maybe not. Whatever we're doing, whatever we're proposing, what's the program when they're there? That's the first question. Who's, and maybe we can speak to what they did when the Chileans were here. What was the program? What was the itinerary? And who's running that? Is it the third-party that's doing that, or do we, do we get involved in arranging that agenda or itinerary when they're there?
So, good question. And the best place to look, and I believe it's linked on the document on Board Docs, there's, so for the CHILA trip, there's an online portal that they, it's all through A-Lac Cart that has the itinerary, it has all the information of what they're doing when they're there. The, and it's pretty detailed, I would recommend taking a look. But basically, it would, the teachers who chaperone are involved in terms of, you know, participating in the, in the excursions when they're going, you know, to do visits and that kind of thing. But the organization does all the coordinating, all of the, you know, financial preparation, providing the support when the students are there as well. So that's, that's, I hope that answers your question.
So we went, FCCPS was not involved in designing that agenda?
Well, we, so we provided them information about Santiago de Chile from prior, from prior trips. So we provided all that information to A-Lac Cart, and they, they built out the trip from, from, you know, some of the things that we provided them, and also some of the, just working directly, the project managers are working directly with the folks over there as well as in terms of, you know, planning out what is going to happen on that side.
On that side. And was it the same group that handled the kids who came over? So they, sort of at the intermediary, they handle that, and they handle this. Okay.
So the update, in terms of building out the program, there was, you know, we provided a lot of information because it was the same school, and so some of the same, you know, and some of the same things that kids might want to do when they were at Santiago. So we sort of, you know, provided the information to them, and they, they're doing all the organization and coordinating.
And would any of our teachers, could any of our teachers go with the kids?
Yes, so we'll, so we'll have, we'll have two teachers that'll join if it's more than a certain amount, depends on how many students travel. So we'll have a couple teachers chaperone.
And then what, they take off their FCCPS teacher hat, and then they put on their contractor hat with A-Lac Cart or whoever?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Isn't that some sort of, some way of sort of getting involved in it by sending out teachers?
And that's where we want to make clear that the teachers communicate to the families that in this role, they are serving as third-party contractors for either A-Lac Cart Travel or the exchange program, Alpha Partners, or the World Strides program, that they're not doing this as an FCCPS employee. So we should have guidance saying, "Don't use your FCCPS email address, and don't be doing this work on FCCPS time," to make it clear that this is an opportunity that is available, but it's an extracurricular activity done through a private entity.
So a teacher leaves for a couple of weeks or 10 days, it's not on FCCPS time?
Under the regulations, for privately sponsored trips, the personnel have to use their own time, and administrative leave isn't granted for participation by school personnel. So they're using their own time, and often then, through the program, the trip is then paid for for them. So they're using their vacation days, but then they're getting a vacation, and by virtue of being a sponsor, the benefit that they get is not having to pay as much for, whether it's the travel or the accommodations or other things.
Okay. No, as a parent, I like the fact that a known adult or a couple of known adults are going with them, but I was also then putting on my...
Sure. School board liability hat.
School board liability hat and asking, okay.
The piece two of overlapping over spring break is a way to minimize the disruption to the, to the students and teacher schedules, so that's what we try to do there.
Well, those are all questions I have, and if they're none, this is just for discussion purposes?
Yeah, tonight was to brief you on sort of where we are. There won't be any policy change, but we wanted to make sure that you all knew that, one, we were paying attention to it, and, two, there are some pretty clear lines that we're drawing to limit the liability of the school division.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hardy.
Not staying for our other discussion?
Me, Sigurup.
All right. I guess we'll move on to the next item, which is the early entrance to kindergarten. Another discussion, Dr. Noonan?
Yeah, it's, thank you, Mr. Ankuma. It's, it is open for discussion. We do have a recommendation at the end of the discussion that we'd like to share with you, and we've had a chance, this kind of goes back a couple of meetings where we've had some conversations about potentially allowing students to enter kindergarten a little bit early, considering their birth date. And Lisa Hi has been working diligently to put together some information and also a recommendation.
Good evening. As an update to our meeting from August where we talked about school divisions surrounding us and what they do, as well as areas that we should consider when looking at kindergarten entrance, as well as the potential impact on FCCPS if we were to adjust the date, you know, past the September 30th. Since our last meeting, I've contacted the surrounding school divisions. Alexandria was a school division that said that it's on a case-by-case basis if they will allow students to enter after the September 30th date. When I contacted them, the assistant superintendent said that they put that in their policy because that's what the VDOE offers or the Code of Virginia allows them to do, but they have not allowed students who are not five to enter after the September 30th date, and that's been within the last four or five years that that individual has worked there. In both Fairfax and Arlington, they do not allow early entrance because of the potential impact to their enrollment. One thing that Fairfax pointed out is that if a child goes to a private kindergarten that's accredited by the Virginia Council of Private Education, they will allow the student to enter first grade and not attend kindergarten. So they will just allow them to just enter even though they're younger. And the information that's shared with you in Board Docs is a summary of a longitudinal study that I looked at for age of entry to kindergarten. There were not a lot of studies out there around early entrance. Most of the studies talked about when kids are in school, they follow them the next five years to see how they progress. But the one study that I did find was from the National Institute of Child Health and Human Development. And I'll just, I know you have a lot of information, so I'll just highlight a little bit on what the study talked about. There were 900 children who participated in the, in the study. They focused on the academic development and then the social-emotional development, and they were measuring students who were 54 months to third grade, so four and a half through third-grade age. Findings that they found is, when considering the early entrance to continue, age a lot of times is considered, but it shouldn't be considered alone. It should be considered along with factors such as the family background, the experiences that students have had, cognitive abilities, as well as the child's social and emotional learning. It's, in this study, they talked about when teachers discuss age does, is an area that teachers always consider when looking for readiness for school, and should be, and also consider that when they're talking about retention at the end of a kindergarten year. So that's the findings from that particular longitudinal study. The next thing that I did is talk to our kindergarten teachers here at Mount Daniel to get their input on what they thought. So the question that I posed to them, "What do you see as the benefits or the concerns for early entrance to kindergarten?" They talked about a few things. First and foremost, one of the things, and it's actually the last bullet that I put on, but equity. The teachers were concerned that if we allow this, are we going to make sure that all families know and have access to allow their students to go in, or would it be parents who, you know, are pushing for their kids to go earlier? So that was important, that we are equitable in whatever our decision would be or your decision will be. Maturity level, the difference between older and younger students, they say that they do see a difference from a student who has a summer birthday versus a student who turned five the fall before. They were concerned about their social-emotional adjustment that may be president, present, and they said, "If this is something that, you know, you go forward," they want to make sure that there is something to give them information on how the students will function in school with, with students who are maybe a little bit older. They believe that age does impact the success of students. One teacher shared a story of a parent who was concerned that their child was going to enter kindergarten later because of their age, because they didn't turn five the year before, and was concerned and considered moving the child to first grade, but after talking to the teacher, the student stayed in kindergarten, parents at the end of the year were happy that they had made that decision because they could see the growth in their child more, not necessarily the academics piece, but more of the social-emotional growth that they saw from their, from their student. Teachers asked, "What's the rush? Allow kids to be kids?" That was just a comment that quite a few of them, them made. So input that I took from the teachers toward this recommendation is that teachers would prefer that it stay with the September 30th, but if we were to be able to, because they are able to differentiate for the kids, but if we were going to move it, please don't move it beyond the October 30th date. They think that would make a huge difference. And then if we do move it to a different date, make sure that there are clear guidelines for how students will be accepted, and then let the final decision rest with the principal after the analysis of the readiness. And so the recommendation that is before you tonight or for you to discuss is that Falls Church City Public Schools will hold to the cutoff date of September 30th for students to be age five for entrance to kindergarten. On a case-by-case basis, the school board may consider entrance of students who reach the fifth birthday by October 31st under the following conditions. The parent and... The parent and child must request in writing to the chief academic officer or assistant superintendent, whatever you want to call me, that the, they being considered for early admission by May 15th of the year that the parent requests the entrance. That the child must be five no later than October 31st and a resident of Falls Church. The child must be evaluated for kindergarten readiness by a certified educational psychologist and the report will be submitted to this office. One of the things that I went out and looked a little bit deeper into, the, the two programs or two businesses that offer kindergarten readiness, that Dr. Schiller had actually given you, I guess, back in April or whenever, but when I looked at it, it seemed like the one at George Mason University seemed to be one that would meet more of our needs if we were to choose a specific program. And with that program, the equity piece, I, I wanted to make sure that there would be some equity if there's a family who, you know, believes their child should be looked at, but they can't afford it. They do a sliding scale or depending on if they're economically disadvantaged. And how they would figure that out, I don't know, because we would not tell them, but then they would offer a sliding scale for those students. So that's one thing with, with that George Mason program. And it's done, conducted by graduate students who are either in their doctoral program or getting a master's in psychology. And then the, at the discretion of the school, the parent and child may be interviewed. Readiness skill assessment may be given to the student by school personnel. And then following all of the assessments, we would look at it, the principal, the, one of FCCPS school psychologists, the chief academic officer would look and then a recommendation would be made to the superintendent and the decision will be provided to the parents no later than July 15th of the requested year.
Questions, comments?
I'll, I'll bite. So with respect to the evaluation, who would bear the cost of this?
Right now it would be the parents, but that would be a school board decision.
We're recommending.
We're recommending that it would be the parents.
Because my, my guess is that it's north of $1,000 to do something like this.
I've, I've sent an email, I've called to try to get a response from them to, to guarantee what the price is, but when I looked on their frequently asked questions, it talked about $390 for the cognitive assessment. It did not talk about the actual social, emotional piece. So that's what's a little bit in question. And then it's 700 for cognitive and achievement, which for, like, for example, Fairfax does, a lot of students go to George Mason for the, what's, what's the program?
Advanced Academic Program.
Advanced Academic Program. And that's 790, so I would think it would probably be less, at most, it would be not more than 700, but 390 is the cognitive piece, so.
And so then there's some unspecified discount that families who needed it would get?
Correct.
But we don't know what that would be.
Well, it's just, it says students with documented eligibility for free and reduced price lunch from any public school system are awarded scholarships covering all testing costs, so.
Okay.
So the numbers that, like, that are in here of the number of potential kindergartners, like, did we get those by people who wanted to apply?
No. What we did, and that was at the August meeting, I went back and worked with our school information officer to see how many students' birthdays fell for the 2015, 16 school year and 16, 17 school year between those dates, October 1st and October 31st. And that's how many students potentially could want, could enter if we were to open it up.
Yeah. Thoughts?
No, I, I think the recommendation is, is good. I really appreciate the teachers' input in terms of readiness, but I do appreciate that we offer an option. I am somebody who did not send my child on time and I, you know, I know that that's something you can do without filing any forms or doing any kind of testing. So it's nice that we offer some alternative for parents who want to do the opposite, which is, you know, let their kid go a little bit earlier.
Yeah, they call my skills thoughts and say, yes, I, I like the fact that it's, we have a policy, but we also allow for exceptions on a one, you know, on a per case-by-case basis, so I'm for the recommendation.
We're, we're talking about moving this by a month for children who are five, five-ish. And I think one of the things that we have to struggle with is any cutoff at this point is going to be arbitrary. We had a September 3rd child and had to deal with that. And I think one of the things that seems not established yet is what the benefits, if any, are, not just after a year, but after two years, five years. You know, do you want a 16-year-old in high school with a bunch of 17-year-olds? You know, this is, to many respects, a, a lifetime decision at one level. I don't know. We, we obviously can't read the future, but it, well, I think we have a, I don't see a big problem with adding a month leeway here in the scheme of things, that doesn't. It's, I'd be even wondering then if that's, if that's worth it, but I suppose leaving it to the discretion of the, the building principal ultimately will make the recommendation, which would be essentially ratified by the superintendent, is that the?
It would be, the building principal would make the recommendation to the chief academic officer, which would be Lisa or whomever is in that position down the line, because she's going to be a superintendent someday. And, and then that would be where it would, that's where it would end.
Okay.
Yep. I, I get your point about arbitrary and, and I do think that in some ways, what isn't arbitrary is the September 30th date. I think that that's rooted in research. I think it's been systematically codified through appropriate channels and the like. I think, I think what this does is it allows some flexibility and puts up, again, some sort of way of defining whether or not the student is ready or not. And in the end, that month, those 30 days may not have as, it obviously doesn't have as big a difference, it's not going to make as big a difference as 60 days or 90 days. But, so I, I think that's where we landed was, it is to a certain extent arbitrary, but within a window of reasonability with respect to what it might look like when a student's 17 and a half graduating from high school, if that makes any sense.
But I guess the other question is, there, there would be, and I don't know how often this happens, I don't think very often, but there is nothing that would prohibit a student who's doing well from being accelerated, although I don't think that happens much. So if you started in kindergarten and a child showed the ability to be a second grader, in other words, the, the fact that a child starts according to these guidelines doesn't remove flexibility down the road either, right?
It, it doesn't, but there is a practice of that acceleration.
Right, it seems, it seems rare now.
So what we'll try and do, and, and I think part of the reason that it's rare is I think we do a better job differentiating instruction at the grade level that those students are currently in. So if they're a fourth grader learning mathematics at grade six, we're going to give them grade six math in fourth grade. And by the time they get to be a junior in high school, they're in matrix algebra or IBHL or whatever the case may be. And we're able to then differentiate through that process. I think the piece that was one of the differentiators for me was that a student who has an October birthday can go to private kindergarten and join us for first grade and, and we're going to take them. And they're still going to have that October birthday for kindergarten. So why not, if, if it's appropriate, have those students join us in October if they're going to go off and do private kindergarten anyway? If that resonates.
So is that one little other point where you talk with a very, for me, the very remote possibility, I talked about it, has to be a resident of Falls Church. So that, what if you have a non-resident tuition paying?
We, we wanted to try to avoid that because of, right now, some pressure issues with space at Mount Daniel.
Okay.
We're not, we're not taking.
I don't know if it's a loophole, but I'm just saying, you know, if they're, if they're not, if they're tuition paying, does that?
We, we currently are not accepting tuition-paying students at Mount Daniel. We can adjust this and modify it down the line, but right now I would, I would be comfortable with keeping that language in there.
Okay.
Just as, as someone who did start kindergarten early, my parents sent me to a private kindergarten so I could start early, like, just being here, I haven't noticed like any, you know, difference intellectually between me and my peers. And it's not something that's like awkward to me, it's just something that, because I have an early birthday and, you know, that's it, so.
Great. I, I don't know if, if I mentioned this before, but if you've ever read Outliers by Malcolm Gladwell, there's a really great chapter in there that talks about students and early birthdays and how that plays out. I think it's a hockey, it's a hockey metaphor, like, you know, October passes to December and, and it talks about how age in sports makes a difference. And, and often how it has an impact in advanced academic programs down the line as well. But that's why we feel like the, the structure that's put in place here that allows for that assessment to happen gives us a better sense of where kids are.
And this is just a discussion as well?
We, we're making a recommendation. We, we are clearing it with Trish Minson to determine whether or not it's an actual policy change. And if it is a policy change, we would bring that for first reading at the next school board meeting.
So we don't have to do, we don't have to vote by any means?
No, you can't vote tonight.
Okay.
Actually.
So, and would there be set criteria or would this be in the sole discretion of the division?
We've, we've left it to the sole discretion of the division.
And it states that explicit, because I would say that would be important to say that.
Other than the, there needs to be outside testing to give us some of the information we need as far as cognitive, language, gross motor, fine motor, kindergarten readiness testing, that piece would be, the parents would be providing it and then the interview and things that happen at the school would be at the discretion of, of the principal and the teachers.
But the up or down is at the discretion of the school division.
Right, because it could be there's, because of reasons not related to the testing status of the student, that facilities budget otherwise wouldn't result in an identical student being approved in the subsequent year. So I think we just want to be very clear about that.
Good point.
Questions? I guess we'll let the chair settle in and while he's doing that, we'll move to school board meeting schedule and budget timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Welcome, Mr. Webb.
Thank you very much.
All right, we move ahead here as you settle in. We have been updating as we've gone along and it's been an internal document, but we're going to share it with you tonight, just to kind of give you a sense of what we're looking at in terms of a timeline for budget, because that is such a significant part of, of what we do for the next several months. So Deidra has taken the lead on this and not to steal her thunder, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. There's not a lot of thunder here, but it is, it is a plan. And what, what we've laid out is, this is something Marty really started and put in the topics that you all have scheduled to look at. And then we've incorporated some of the, the budget activities. And the way it's, the way it's envisioned is we are going to be going out and getting a lot of feedback between now and when the superintendent's budget is proposed. What, what do people, you know, given the reality of, of the financial situation, what do people want? And you're not going to see all of those meetings on this calendar. For example, we've, we're scheduling a forum with elementary staff, secondary staff and department staff to go through sort of the same exercise that we're going to do with the community. And you can see that the community forums are scheduled for early December. And the idea really is, is to, to get a sense of what people are looking for in the budget. The, the, there will of course be, it's, you can see scheduled work sessions before and, but primarily after the superintendent's budget is released so that the school board can get the information you need to make the decisions that, that you all will be faced with. I want to just mention, I think these are two fairly important dates, the, and I'm sure you, you know this, but December 4th is when you have your joint meeting with the city and the city provides. I'm sorry.
The general government.
Oh, the general government, is that what you call it? Okay.
Schools plus general government equals city.
Okay. I did not know that. I stand corrected. But, and then the governor releases his budget on December 18th, which will, is sort of the other piece of, of a school budget, what, what, what the community, what the locality provides and what, what the state provides. So that is how we've structured it. I think that as we go through the process, there'll be much more detail put around the, the meetings. One of the things that we've talked about and envisioned is, and I'm trying to think of where this is on the calendar.
It's December 19th work session.
It's December 19th, December 4th, no, 19th, you're right, work session. We're going to, you know, I think your practice has been to have employee groups and advisory groups come and speak to the board at a, at a budget work session. And what we thought would, 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 might be a better way to get a stronger sense of what these groups are looking at is to say, okay, they ask them to make a statement and then give the school board the opportunity to ask questions or amplify, get amplification of what, what it is they're talking about. So that's one sort of minor change, but bring them all in and have that opportunity with the board.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. You know, I, I did mention it to SEEK this afternoon, that we'd like to give them maybe a little more time than three minutes to have more of an engagement with you. We would do the same, I mentioned that to P, excuse me, we'll mention it to SEEK as well. And we thought we'd bring in the SAOs to also spend a little bit of time and then school leadership, so the principals would come and then perhaps some advisory committees. It'd be a big night, but all having an opportunity to engage a little deeper than just a three-minute statement to the board, give you a chance to kind of get a general sense of the community. I also think it, it gives us an opportunity for these different community groups to hear from each other as well and not, not to set up competing interests, but just to make sure that everybody understands sort of what the, the playing field looks like. And, and that same night, we'll also do the draft CIP, so we'll get a chance to see the whole thing, the whole big picture. Does that make sense to do that? Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, hopefully this will be helpful to you to kind of get these dates on your calendar. Again, these are, these are somewhat drafty, but it's getting firmer by the second, so. And hopefully, you know, we're starting now. So the budget, the budget process has begun, begun in earnest, I think, at this point.
And, don't know if you had the conversation about, but talking a little bit about some of the suggestions and things from the Perkins Eastman.
Yeah, that was part of the budget, budget piece too, as, as part of this timeline as we head into, you know, the, the referendum and the like. One of, one of the things that's come up as part of the budget process has been really two things. One is, are there ways that as we go out to this referendum for us to, to look for opportunities within the, within the potential design and construction to consider some cost savings? And I just want to remind the board that in our previous conversations, we did come forward with a number of recommendations to cut classrooms, to cut space in PE, to cut space in the auditorium area. At one point, I came forward with, I think, a proposal to even cut, there were, as a, in addition to a couple of others, to cut as many as 15 classrooms. We have gone back and we've cut a reduced number of those to five. But as we go forward with this process, if the referendum were to pass, one of the things that we're developing in that RFQ process are lists of things that we must have and those things that we'd like to have. And as we look at those like to haves, those will be places that if need be, will, will make the appropriate cut. But we would look to, to ourselves to figure out ways, if there are ways to, to do some cost cutting in the construction process to do that. The one thing I don't want to do, to be perfectly frank though, is I don't want to value engineer this to the point where we're getting something less than what I think any of us would expect. That doesn't mean that we would do terrazzi tile through the whole building. We might do just major foyer areas, just as an example with terrazzi tile and then do other tile in the back, which could be a cost-cutting. other tile in the back, which could be a cost-cutting mechanism. One of the places that I don't think we'll look at for reduction is geothermal. I think that was pretty clear across the board. But there may be some other space-saving areas, and we've already reduced the square footage of the auditorium and the gymnasium space just slightly to bring it into that really $109 construction... $109 million construction. Remember, $11 million of that is the design and engineering, FFNE and the like. So we really are trying to bring that in. The other piece that has come up in the conversation is, you know, operational costs and how we may be able to constrain operational costs. And there are... We've put out a document as part of the early process in this pre-referendum phase where we've shown 4% growth year over year, and you can see what that looks like. We only did that because it was a 10-year average of what growth looked like. We have kids that are coming, and we can't stop them from coming. So there's going to be some growth, and it's going to be organic growth from students. One of the things we are committed to, though, is figuring out ways that we can really constrain some of our internal growth, new programs, looking at other cost-cutting mechanisms internally as necessary without compromising the instructional program or the quality of education that we are expecting of our kids or our teachers. We met with the principals today and the leadership team, just as an example. And as we engage in this budget process, one of the pieces that we shared with them, and Deidre McLaughlin put this together, was a budget request document. And in that budget request document, it asks for what their requests would be, and this would come from the staff and the like, how it's tied to the triennial plan very specifically. So we're utilizing that triennial plan to really streamline what our focus areas are and what the benefit would be, instructionally and academically. That's page one. Page two is, what would you reduce? What would you consider as a cost-cutting mechanism? Not one-for-one necessarily, but what are some areas that you can recapture some savings to help repurpose those dollars for this new position or this new piece? And the idea there is to try to come at this budget as best we can in a cost-neutral way. I know that we're not going to get to cost-neutral. I think there's no way to get to cost-neutral when you grow in the way that we're growing. But if there are repurposing of dollars and funds that we can look at as opposed to just continuing to be additive, we're very interested in doing that. So those have been some of the conversations that we've been having behind the scenes. Again, the last thing in the world that I want to do is compromise the quality of education that we provide in the City of Falls Church. And I'm committed to, when I present the budget to you all in January, proposing a budget that's responsible and responsive to the needs of our community. And if that means that we have to grow, it means that we have to grow. But we really are going to approach it from a way... In a way that we're going to try to constrain those costs.
Okay. Any questions for anyone?
Okay.
Mr. Castillo?
Well, I'd say one of the things to do is tee up to the community if they like larger class size, because we've had this discussion over the years, and we're not talking about 20% discretionary money here. You look at the way you build the budget, and you maybe have a couple of percentage points of leeway. And so I would set expectations very clearly that there isn't, with respect to facilities, an overbuilt $120 million option. It's been carefully thought through, and if you start to cut that in any significant way, you're basically compromising the integrity of the program down the road. Same thing with instructional and, you know, the operational budget. There really isn't... You can say, we're going to zero-base budget everything, and then it's like, well, I guess we need teachers, so they go back in. Guess we need supplies, they go back in, and all of a sudden, you really...
You're back to 94%.
You're back to... Yeah. So I think it's very important also to remember our obligation to deliver high-quality free education to K-12 students. And there are people who think that we spend too much doing that, and I think we need to spend more time explaining why that's not well-founded. You look at what neighboring jurisdictions pay, spend, we're in line with that. You look at neighboring private schools who probably spend twice what we spend, and we get as good outcomes. So I think people need to understand that we're offering a screaming deal to the community, not that we're somehow going to be able to cut things by 20%. And as the student enrollment increases, our budget will increase or the quality of instruction will go down in some form or fashion. It's as simple as that.
I think that point is well-made. And if you look at where the places to go are for any kind of reduction, it is in people. And the only way we can get to a reduction in staff is by raising class size. And I know that there isn't a whole lot of appetite for that among the board, among our community, and certainly among our staff. And you're right, almost 90% of our budget is in people. We're a very lean organization, and so those are things we're going to have to consider.
Oh, 84, 85, not 90, but up there.
Up there.
Any other questions or comments?
Mine only is this, that in asking Dr. Nune to talk a little bit about that, is just to let folks know, those who are questioning whether we're just going out here and looking purely at trying to get the Cadillac of schools, that that's not at all what we're doing. But we aren't going to cut corners either to compromise what we have overall in the education that folks come to Falls Church, and they recognize they pay the higher tax rate because of the school. So but I do also want to, and as I've said before, commit to them that we are definitely open to looking at ways of saving. But what we won't do is compromise the overall quality of education that we have provided for 60-plus years, and I don't think anyone in the community would want us to do that. But again, like I said, where there can be savings, we'll look for those. But we ask for the 120 because we want to make sure that we have enough to cover what we are looking to do. But the 120 is the max that we are asking for in the bomber referendum. We're not saying that we are asking for any more, that that's the max. We may not spend that much, but that's up until what we can spend on this goal. And if there are ways to potentially have some savings within that construction, where Dr. Nune mentioned some of the areas that, if I'm recalling from the Perkins Eastman presentation from over the summer, you know, there were some areas, auditorium and with our gym space, that were a little... That were bigger than some of the Arlington spaces. So making those right sizes for us and what we're definitely still building in some growth space there, I think, make a big difference overall within the process of what the school's going to look like. But value-engineering, I will not support value-engineering because I think that's what has happened over the years of getting us to the George Mason. Pieces added on over the years that have done nothing but give a Band-Aid to what is a building that should have been either extensively renovated 15, 20 years ago or a brand-new building happening now. And I think this is the opportunity for us to get the right facility for the community. But with that said, is there any other... Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, it's one of the chair's remarks, paying higher taxes because of the schools. We don't pay higher taxes because of the schools here in Falls Church. If you look at our tax rate relative to similarly-sized jurisdictions, we're right where everybody else is.
I understand.
So again, I just say, we're delivering a screaming bargain here.
I understand.
And we need to be clear about that.
No, and again, I understand that, and it's just making more of the statement of more of our closer-end jurisdictions that are on either side of us, Arlington and Fairfax, we do pay more than they do. And a lot of the folks who make the choice of having the... When they're looking to buy homes, when they're looking at the school systems, they see and know tax rate is lower in Arlington, tax rate is lower in Fairfax. But when they're looking at the school systems that ultimately their kids are going to go to, that plays a factor into it, and they make the choice to come to Falls Church and knowing that they could have gone to Arlington, could have gone to Fairfax for a less rate. But they chose because, most cases, not everyone. When I moved here, it wasn't for the schools, but definitely knowing that the schools are where they are. When Clifton and I adopt kids, we know we have a place where we can be quite comfortable that our kids are going to get a great education. So but, you know, that's what I mean. But yes, relative to our size of Manassas Park, Vienna, places like that, we are definitely well within tax rates for those jurisdictions. I agree.
And I think the chair is right. You move to Falls Church because it's not Arlington, because it's not Fairfax County. And if we want to join Fairfax County, we can do that, but do we really want to do that?
Any other comments before we move on? If not, we'll move on to someone like... Read us into... Read us into closed, please.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, a move that the board can be in a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-377A, i.e. in particular resignation of a specific employee.
Thank you very much. Second? Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Ms. Gil?
Mr. Ann Kuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gil?
Aye.
And for those who may want to hang around, you can be more than happy to do that, but that's the last official business item. That's all.
Does someone want to move us back in opening?
No, moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, right. All right. If someone would certify the closed meeting.
Okay. Chair, whereas the Falls Church City Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, where our Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board, by the school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Kuma. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo.
Mr. Ann Kuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Aye.
Ms. Gil?
Aye.
Mr. Webb?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Back to him.
Thank you, Chairman Webb. There recently has been some public discussion about Falls Church City Public Schools teacher Jamie Lay. As a confidential matter, there'll be no specific comment about the details of the professional differences between Mr. Lay and the school administration. However, myself and Mr. Lay believe the public should know that they... That we have come to an agreement, and Mr. Lay has decided to leave teaching in Falls Church. Mr. Lay's departure and the differences between Mr. Lay and the school administration do not relate to student safety or student academic performance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nune. Before we adjourn, I believe you wanted to make a comment.
I wanted to make a comment just about Mr. Lay.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Lay, like, I know he's leaving. I found out a few days ago. He's just always been someone who's been there. He got me into government. He got me into civics. When I first entered George Mason High School, he got me... He made me more comfortable with the community of Falls Church. In ninth grade, I was... It was my second year here. He was really a leader for many students. He's someone that where many students, they didn't have somewhere to go during lunch or during lunching blocks, so they'd always come to his room. Or students just learning, who just want to learn something, they would just come and talk to him. He's a really smart... He's a really smart person, and he's someone who I highly respect.
Thank you very much. Any other comments before we adjourn? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.